All right.
Came back?
All right, we have a lineup of meetings this evening and a late start because of early voting, and we wanted to make sure that we are accommodating our poll workers and voters. So let me jump into the first meeting in the lineup this evening. This is a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Board of Public Safety. For the record, today is Monday, October 20th, 2025. We have a quorum of both boards. It is now 6:49 PM. And for the record, I'll read in who is attending and how they are attending. So, present and attending for the City Council in person, I have Councilwoman Waldron, Councilwoman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette, and Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. Attending in person representing the Board of Safety, I have Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner McElroy. In person and via Zoom, I have Commissioner Cogswell and Commissioner Young. So there's the quorum for both boards. Before we jump into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance.
All right, item number one on the joint meeting this evening is that I will entertain, I have to do this two separate motions. I will entertain a motion made by the members of the Board of Public Safety to award the purchase of 90 Glock handguns to Amchar Wholesale of Rochester, New York, for a total of $52,380, reflecting a purchase price of $65,880, less a $13,500 trade-in value for the Sig Sauer weapons. Funding for this purchase will be provided through the asset forfeiture account. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
And seconded by Commissioner McElroy. And the floor is open for questions or comments. We do have Sergeant Giordano here to answer questions, but I also see that Deputy Chief Barone is online if there's something we need to defer to him. Any questions from the Board of Safety? And I would just say, I know that Sergeant Baldass did a lot of the legwork on scouting out the swapping of the firearms. Did I say Baldass?
Yeah.
Sorry. Sergeant Giordano. Soon as I say Sergeant, his name automatically pops into my mouth, so. All right, if there are no questions, I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so to the council, same motion. I'll entertain the motion to award the purchase of the 90 Glock handguns, Amchar Wholesale, Rochester, New York, $52,380, reflecting the purchase price of $65,880, less the $13,500 trade-in, and the funding is coming from asset forfeiture.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Are there questions or comments from the council?
The age of the handguns that we're replacing, can we have a little background information on this order?
Good evening. The age on the current handguns were issued is approximately four and a half to, yeah, four and a half years.
Is that the typical lifespan of usage?
We usually go approximately seven. We have slightly different circumstances here with some reports of unintended discharges that have been made with these current handguns, and ran into some issues with the police academy not allowing it on their property, along with other academies not allowing it on their property. So given that, we ran into kind of a rock and a hard place on what we could do, so it's slightly earlier than intended. I guess, yeah, just basically a little bit sooner than planned.
Okay. And a Glock is just known for a more reliable?
Again, very standard issue gun throughout the country, as was the purchase of the original ones we have. And this is a recent issue that was spurred over the last couple of months, so we've been actively working to address it.
Okay. And you feel comfortable with this purchase?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions, Sergeant Giordano?
Mayor, if I could just clarify something?
Oh, there you are. Sorry. Deputy Chief Barone, yes.
So with the, you know, the discharges, that's a, they've happened in several states, nationwide, it's an issue there. We have not had any issues with these guns, and they've been fine for us, but because of the circumstances that are going on with the state of Connecticut and these outside agencies outside the state, we are, we are moving to stay ahead of this curve and to transition to the Glock firearm.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any other questions before I call the motion? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sergeant. All right, we're going to move into item number two. So, once you swap out the firearms, it does change the other equipment that's necessary. So back to the Board of Public Safety, I'll entertain a motion to utilize Massachusetts' Higher Education Consortium, that's MHEC, New England Contract MC01-F24, and award the purchase of 90 Level III retention duty holsters, 30 paddle and belt loop concealment holsters, and 90 open-top double magazine pouches to Whitmer Public Safety/Officer Store of Coatesville, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $21,374.58. Funding again for this purchase will be provided through the asset forfeiture account. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, and seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments from any other commissioners before I call the vote? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And to the council, the same motion for the acquisition of the 90 Level III retention duty holsters, 30 paddle and belt loop concealment holsters, and 90 open-top double magazine pouches to Whitmer Public Safety. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
So moved.
And seconded to Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open for questions on this.
Just a piece of information.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, and just out of curiosity, how is this coming through a higher education consortium?
And so Penny, our purchasing agent, is here as well, but Sergeant, if you want to?
I believe that that falls under the state contract purchases. The deputy might be able to explain that a little bit more than on the order side than I can.
It's not, yeah.
But I believe.
It's not transparent, as we like to say.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it is that it just falls under what is the state contract. It's almost as if when we purchase ammunition, everything's purchased on a state contract set price, and I believe that's what that means. It's all falls underneath that.
Okay. Fair enough.
And it is a, it's a competitive bid process that these, these are highly specialized contracts.
Right.
So it is a, through a consortium or through the state contracts, they are competitive bid processes that other municipalities can piggyback off of.
Oh, I'm not questioning the validity or the reason why. I'm, it's just kind of curious. That's all.
Yeah.
Why it would be this type of consortium. It's all right.
No other questions? All right, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move into item number three. I will entertain a motion again by the Board of Public Safety to authorize a mayor to award, execute, and administer a contract utilizing State Contract Number 22 PSX0133 for the uplifting, upfitting of two police department supervisors Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Cruisers with a single compartment Procell one-half partition and passenger-side-only retractable outboard seat belts, enabling these vehicles to serve as frontline patrol cruisers. Work will be performed by McGovern MHQ of Middletown, Connecticut. Thank you. I just want to, for the record, if the public is zooming in, the total cost for this upfitting of these cages in the cruiser is $8,718.34, and the funding is coming from vehicle replacement. Motion made by Councilwoman Rouette, or excuse me. This has to go to the commissioners first.
Yeah. So moved.
Thank you. Yeah. So thank you. Motion made by Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Are there questions to the commissioners? Board of Safety? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Now to the council. Same motion.
I love it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions or comments?
Yes, can someone describe what a passenger cage?
Well, it's a, what, I didn't quite hear the question, what the passenger is?
No.
What a pass-through cage.
Oh, a pass, so a pass-through cage. So we, we've got some cars outfitted with single cages, which means they only allow for one side to be used in the back, and then the other side could store equipment or whatever. These are going to be complete pass-throughs, so you can put a, when we take somebody into custody, you can put them on either side of the car. That's all. So it's a pass-through. Single one has a Plexiglas divider in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And thank you to Deputy Chief. All right, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the final agenda item is, and enter, again, to the Board of Public Safety, I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of the cargo hauler trailer to Elm City Auto and Trailer of Bethany, Connecticut. The acquisition price is $12,720, and the funding for the purchase will be coming from asset forfeiture account.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. And questions from the Board of Safety? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. And to the council, the same motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, there being no further business for the joint boards this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Where's the second, Councilman Kevin Arrow? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned for that meeting. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Don't you want to stay?
All right, let's move into the regular meeting for the City Council and WPCA. For the record, it is now 7:01 PM, and the same members of the council are present and attending in person. We will move into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open this meeting to the public for public comment.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody from the public wishing to address the council this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll move on to item number two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing minutes from October 6, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
An abstention.
And for the record, an abstention from Councilman Kevin Arrow. Moving on to 2B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes for October 6, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino, and I heard a second from Councilwoman Rouette. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm assuming an abstention.
Abstention.
Yes, thank you, from Councilman Kevin Arrow. Thank you. Moving on to item number three. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to approve the request from the Many Faces of Torrington organization to install and display its art exhibit in the City Hall Auditorium. This authorization applies solely to this specific exhibit, and is subject to review and oversight by city staff to ensure compliance with all city policies governing the use of public buildings. The display shall be installed and removed within a defined period as coordinated with the facilities department.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And Patty Casella, is Patty here?
I saw her in the back.
Yep.
Everybody is blocked by the podium. I can't see who's here. She's here.
Okay. Do you want to come up and maybe if there are questions? Or maybe you could talk a little bit?
I see, Joanne. Yeah, if you want to talk a little bit about your goals with this exhibit?
The Many Faces of Torrington is co-sponsored by the Torrington Historical Society, and Our Culture is Beautiful, and Five Points Arts. We have a lot to celebrate about Torrington, and that's why you're here. But when you look around this room, what's needed to celebrate is the many pieces of the puzzle of Torrington that come together. So this is a project, the photo gallery project. It's intended to show diversity. It's intended to show people that go about their regular lives and contribute to our community. So did we include in this project, are we going to include every famous person that has walked through Torrington? Perhaps not, unless those people are nominated. But the people that are in this photo gallery project have been nominated by someone in our community because of some contribution they have made. Some of them are familiar faces to you, and some of them you may not even know, but the primary criteria was diversity. Because if you look at these beautiful portraits and the pictures, we need a presence that celebrates the diversity in this community. And Joanne can address just how diverse Torrington is, and it's, it's something we should celebrate and be proud of. So that's the nature of the project. But if you have any questions, or, we also are open to nominations. This is not written in cement. It's not a project that ends. It's a living thing, so we invite you to think of it that way.
Can you talk about the banner?
Well, yes, so the specifics of it is we're going to give 20 framed pictures, and I think you saw a description of this on your emails, 20 framed portraits that would reflect many different people. But there's also going to be a rather large banner, and you want to talk about the banner?
So the banner is intended to be a collage of faces, so we can include many more faces than just the, the 20 portraits that will be framed for City Hall. And the idea that this will be something that can be perhaps displayed here, displayed at Five Points, displayed in the library. And most recently, we're hearing about the 250th anniversary and the fact that there might be banner, banners on poles, and that maybe the, this collage or parts of this collage could be those faces as well. And again, it's just to help celebrate truly the wonderful, the wonderful fabric tapestry that is Torrington.
And I'm sure that in your packet that was shared with you, you noticed that it's not just current faces, it's faces from the past, and they're intermixed, and the banner is coming together in a really exciting way that I think you would all be proud of, so.
Are there any questions from the council for Patty or Joanne?
I don't have a question. I just want to say what a, what a great idea this is. I really love it. So I'm excited to see these being displayed.
Thank you. I wish I could say it originated with me, but it didn't. It originated with Our Culture is Beautiful, and it's just grown in an exciting way.
All right.
Curious, how do people submit a recommendation, and are there criteria?
The criteria is some, the way they submit it is they email it to me, they email it to Joanne, or they turn to any of the other partners, and they suggest a name, and they usually suggest a portrayal or portrait. And I'm smiling because there's someone on your council that was nominated, and we've had trouble getting the contact number, and I can't believe that's been such a trouble. But they're just nominated by people.
Yep.
Themselves and other people, and a reason is given. And like I said, some of them are, are famous in Torrington, some of them not. Some of them are, and we've intentionally made that a criteria, that some, these are people some of them will never be recognized. So, does that help? So it's really easy to nominate someone.
So just email you?
I'm sorry, what?
So just email you?
Email me, or phone and call me, and then once the name has been given to us, we send out a congratulatory letter and ask them to submit either a picture, or we have two wonderful volunteer photographers who journey out with their cameras and take these beautiful pictures of people.
And a photo release form.
And a photo, oh, yes, that's very important. So everyone that appears in this, in this project signs a photo release form or has submitted their photographs to the Historical Society in the past. And so those are, that's considered public domain or whatever. There's a term for that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions before I call the motion?
Well, just if I could say something, I like what I see already, so Paulo Abade was one of my neighbors. We used to check in on him when I was a kid, so.
We thank you a lot for considering this, too, for getting behind it and being so positive.
Okay, so again, the motion is that we'll work with the Historical Society and Our Culture is Beautiful, and particularly Patty and Joanne, to determine where they will be hung, or displayed, I should say, where they'll be displayed, and what the period of time they will be displayed. So if there are no additional questions or comments, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much. We would do cartwheels, but we better not.
I know. Go, go for it.
Go for it.
Okay, we're going to move into item number four. This is, it's in two parts. So 4A is a review and discussion of the five-year benchmark status of the Five Points Center for Visual Arts lease terms. And the document has been provided to you in your packets. This was a document that was prepared for us by Judy McElhone and her board. And I don't know, Judy, if you just wanted to come up to the podium and talk a little bit about the exciting things that you've accomplished? Fifteen years' worth of accomplishments in five years?
Yeah, sort of. I'd like to introduce you all to Eric Forsman, our board chair. We have a wonderful board and a wonderful team, as you know. We've managed to accomplish all those things in five years because everybody's worked so hard to do that. And the more, the harder we work, the quicker we can get the, the center up and running, and we're running out of room at the center. So I don't know if anybody has any more questions about, you know, how, what your questions may be. I think one of our concerns is, if you remember, when the city gave the land to Yukon, it was established that if Yukon ever left, the city would, the land would go back to the city of Torrington, and that didn't happen. And we are concerned that in 15 more years, politics could change, other options could come up, and this whole, really hard work by so many people could be lost. And so we'd like to, to ask for that agreement as soon as possible so that we can go forward. So just to sort of close the loop where Judy is talking about, so there are a couple of new council members here, the more veteran council members that were a part of the land lease agreement that was executed in 2020, called for a 20-year lease of the portion of the property on University Drive that the city owned, acquired from the University of Connecticut when they closed their campus and sold the buildings and some of the acreage to Five Points. Embedded in that land lease agreement were benchmarks. The council wanted to see progress towards sustainability, and those benchmarks were broken down to a five-year, 10-year, 15-year, and 20-year periods. At the conclusion of the 20th year, there would be an option to purchase, where Five Points could take title to the, to the balance of the city-owned property for $1. And the purpose for these report on the benchmarks, which are the topic of discussion right now, is to show not only progress towards sustainability, but accelerated progress towards sustainability. So as it relates to any of the benchmarks, are there any questions from the council that Eric or Judy might be able to answer? Or comments? Because I, for one, am pretty impressed.
I have, I have no questions, but I'm very impressed with the amount of work you were able to get done in five years, especially with COVID.
Thank you. So many great people working so hard. Yes, well, and good leaders always say, it's always the team, right? So, yeah, I, again, when Judy came to me to talk about what the report to the council would look like for the five-year benchmarks, and we reviewed them and thought, year, year 15, probably year 17 or 18, very honestly. So if there are no questions?
If I could just ask, what, what should we expect in the future now?
Excuse me?
What should we expect in the future?
Oh, an art park dedicated to the history of the land and the environment? We've started on that, but very slowly. That takes a lot of money to really pull that off, because we have to bring in sculptors and pay and get them set up, as right now there are three major sculptures on the land, and there are two more coming in. And so that I expect to grow and to, you know, help people. I think what we really want to get out of what the art center is, is that it helps people understand themselves and the world they're living in by making art. Whether it's a little kid scribbling out a piece of paper, or a grandpa scribbling out a piece of paper. You get lost in that moment, and it isn't about, the art isn't about being rich and famous, you know, that's only for the rich and famous. Art's for everyone. And all kinds of studies have proven how that's helped people's lives, and we're very much encouraged to keep that up in every way we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions with regard to the five-year benchmarks? All right, we're going to move into 4B. I know, this little sidebar conversation here is a little distracting, so.
I have a simple question.
Yeah.
Judy, what, let me see here.
Thank you.
Under step two, June 2025, anyway, number, item number seven, establish and operate summer high school weekend and other programming for high school students from Torrington and elsewhere. This is just, because summer, establish and operate summer, these are summer programs only. What is the, I thought when we started this, this whole journey together with the City Council and your team, that we were going to incorporate, we're going to try to get more coop, more regular, what am I trying to say? Interaction between Five Points and middle school, high school, on a regular basis throughout the year. Is, what are the impediments?
Part of that is transportation. It's very difficult to get people of youngsters there, because both parents are working. We found by stretching that out through the summer through a Pell's Grant out of New York, that we can do it in the summer and get kids there.
Was there a need, Judy? I mean, did we do a needs, did we find out that there were students who would like to do that through?
We found there were students that were, and what we've been able to do is offer it at no cost, through the Pell Grant.
No, no, but, but during the school year, where there are art students within Torrington, primarily at the high school, but I assume at the junior high level.
Right.
Who would be interested in throughout the year, coming on an afternoon at some point and taking, you know, a better.
We found that was, we found it was difficult when we tried that, but we, we're not giving up trying, no.
Well, again, and the difficulty was just transportation?
Yeah, basically transportation, yeah.
Interest though, Judy, were you able to figure out if there was an interest and the?
There is an interest. Yeah, there is an interest. We have some great comments that came from some of the high school students that have been involved.
It just seems like such a waste to have such an incredible facility up there in Torrington, and we're a distressed community, and we have so few opportunities for.
That's exactly the problem. Yep.
Guidance in these areas, it's right there for.
I wish we had more transportation from the center of Torrington or the schools to get kids up there. We can't afford to, you know, to buy a bus at this point, but that is an issue.
Yeah, the.
We're, we're working it. We're working it, Paul.
I think, I think maybe, hopefully, you can. I think maybe, hopefully, you can get some support from the next city council to work with you, with the Board of Education, to figure out, we spent so much money.
Oh, I would love that. Yeah.
Begin with. It seems to me, it should be not a big problem to have on a, on a regular basis, whether one afternoon or two, to go up the Goshen Road and back to the high school. It just seems.
You know, they do it for sports, so they should do it for the arts, right?
There should be. And so I would strongly recommend coming back after the election because there's going to be new people here, and, and making your pitch to them and, and working on that cooperation because what you're offering is incredible. There are few, if any, I don't know, throughout the state of Connecticut, a few other opportunities like this. We have it, and it's just sitting there unused by our at-need population in, in our high school, so.
So we need to work on that definitely. We've worked with the Police Athletic League.
Yep.
We have gone out to different people in the community. I hope that we can do more. It's one of those things we're working on because we're just growing, baby steps quickly. We're only five years there.
I know, Judy.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you. It's, it's something that we talk about all the time.
For school, for, for student busing into Torrington.
Yep.
And this is not a huge ask.
No, it is not. I'm happy to ask.
Though, I also think that there may be other opportunities with Northwest Transit Authority. You know, there's public transportation that should be accessed and adding a route that would afford kids to be picked up at the school. If the school can't afford to do these buses, you know, Northwest Transit should probably start thinking about that.
Love that. Absolutely love it. Great.
So I agree with you. After the election, another council, another Board of Education, and bringing in Northwest Transit to see how that can be looped in as well.
I could applaud.
Other, yeah. Well, Judy, I mean, Joanne offered a cartwheel, so.
You're not getting a cartwheel from me.
Any other questions on the benchmark document? And for those of you that are looking at the benchmark document on the screen, what was in black was what was written into the lease agreement. And what is in red is what Judy and her board and her team report out as to progress towards goal. All right. So 4B is the request that was presented to me a few months ago. And Judy and I and Corporation Council sat down and looked at, you know, what are the options? So again, referring to the lease that was executed between the city of Torrington and Five Points with regard to the, the use of the portion of the property on University Drive that was transferred to the city of Torrington by the University of Connecticut for the purposes of expanding any of those art opportunities, specifically the art park that you heard Judy speak of. So for discussion purposes, I will entertain a motion to amend the existing lease agreement with the Five Points Center for Visual Arts to accelerate the exercise of the option to purchase period as requested by Judy. And her board, I'm sorry. Motion made by Councilwoman Iveyne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. All right, so to elaborate, as you see in the lease agreement, if you were reading through it before the council meeting, the intent was, at the conclusion of the twenty-year period of time, that Five Points would be afforded the opportunity to acquire the property for $1, having met all of those benchmarks. When Judy came to us and showed us where they were in progress towards goal, the request was, is there any reason why the council wouldn't consider accelerating that option to purchase? Instead of occurring in 2040, it would be fast-tracked to occur this year, 2025.
So.
Questions?
I'm a little hesitant.
Yeah, please.
I think Councilwoman Cavanaro mentioned, you know, this is sort of a new administration, new players coming in in another month. It was intended to be forty years because this is a big move, you know, for one Yukon. I'm uncomfortable with today. Making the decision to change the lease to now.
It's for twenty years, excuse me, it's twenty years.
I know.
Oh, I thought you said forty, excuse me.
Well, it's a forty-year lease.
Five years until forty.
So we're, we're, right, it's a total of forty, forty-year lease. So you want to extend it now before the end of the forty years, correct?
No, it was twenty years.
The option period.
Right, was twenty years. And at that time, if we'd met the benchmarks.
Accelerate the lease agreement in front of us by fifteen years then.
Yes, exactly.
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable doing that today, so, you know, with the change of administration. I don't know what your budget is, where you are, as, you're a 501(c)(3), I would imagine.
Yes, we're a 501(c)(3), yep.
Are you stable? Are you financially stable?
Yes, we are.
And Judy, I mean, I think there's so much. Again, in the five-year, the, the benchmarks that were shared with the board, you could see where significant grants were provided to the Five Points. A lot of the progress that was made was the direct result of those grant funds. The programs that have been brought, I think, were evidence of the, not only a really clear vision of what the Five Points Board was trying to present, but evidence of the capability of this board and the director to bring those to fruition as quickly as they did. I, I understand the reluctance, it's a twenty-year term, but the reason for those benchmarks was so that they can show sustainability. If they're able to show that sustainability in a five-year period of time, I'm, I'm just wondering if the council would consider that to be enough evidence of sustainability.
I would agree. I disagree.
You disagree?
Judy, you know, I, I use your facility, I'm a big fan of what you've accomplished, but I'm speaking now as a city councilman who's been doing this a long time. And I always, always, when I was Board of Education Chair, I always thought about my actions in terms of, what are we leaving for the next group of decision-makers? And I do think that truncating this lease this radically, I, I would like that decision to be made by the next people who are sitting in these chairs. And I would have no problem. I mean, I may lose, if I'm re-elected, I have no problem with you coming back in one year and truncating it at that point. Where there's going to be new, there's going to be a new mayor. There's going, a bunch of these people are not running, several of our people. There's going to be a new council and a new mayor. And at that point, let those people own this decision. I, I don't like, I just don't feel right about people who may soon be leaving the decision-making process, making decisions that are going to affect a particular agreement for the next fifteen years. I just don't think that's proper governance. I don't.
I appreciate that, but I'll also say, in the next fifteen years, something could happen politically or otherwise.
I'm just asking to extend it until a new board and a new mayor are sitting, and let those people ultimately drive this decision. That's what I'm, that's what I'm supporting.
I'm disappointed, but I understand.
Sure. It's not the first time I've disappointed people, Judy.
I know, I'm sure.
So if I can chime in, I understand what you're saying, Paul, and I understand your concerns. But can we do something like a writ of first refusal where, you know, at twenty years, or, you know, beforehand, if they don't want to own the property anymore, the city gets the option of having the property turned back over to them?
Well, that's really already in here.
Reversion.
Yep.
What, what Five Points has under the lease is an option to purchase.
Yep.
At the end of twenty years.
Right.
So they are, they have exactly what you're asking for. I think what, what they're asking for, though, is allow them to exercise the option now.
Right.
Rather than.
But if we have something like that in the deed, I, I would be comfortable doing this now. And although I understand that we're going to have a new administration in a month and a half. But having something in the deed when we transfer the property that allows the city to get the property back, you know, within, you know, prior to twenty years if something was to happen. So we have that security. Because we're giving, we're selling the property for a dollar. We don't want, you know, God forbid, something happens with Five Points, and, you know, five years from now, they have to close, they sell the property for X amount of dollars to a private company, and the city just sold it for a dollar. So the right of first refusal, right of reversion for us to get the property back, if that was to happen.
You're asking me?
Yes, I am.
Well, and you know, of course, I'm not the decision-maker. But, but what I would say is, I think the option is, is pretty ironclad. I know Judy has expressed concern that changing, you know, public officials, changing politics could affect things, but the option is there. It's, this is a binding enforceable agreement, and the option is in there. So even if the mayor changes, the city council changes, they can't take that away from Five Points. The option will always be there.
Can I ask a question on that then? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I tend to talk too much.
From a legal perspective, it seems that doing a deed now, conveying it with a reversionary clause just makes it a little more complicated than it already is. From a legal perspective, that's what I would say.
Complicated, but doable.
Yeah. Yeah, do, yeah, it's doable.
That's what I'm saying, just from a new, a new, a new, a new city government sitting here. Well, they own that decision.
It will be the, the sitting mayor in December. So I feel confident Five Points will be there forward for the next fifteen years. So I would agree to doing this now.
Well, one of the reasons that I'm asking is a bit selfish. I'm going to be paws up in fifteen years, and I would really like to see this happen, okay? I think that, and also for the people that have worked so hard. Would it fail? It could fail, I suppose. But if it goes back to the city of Torrington, it goes back to the city of Torrington, you know? It's, it's selfish, but.
But we also feel like the acceleration of this move will help the Five Points accelerate into being a much more super-regional, possibly, hopefully, national presence, which I think can only really help Torrington and the people in it.
Last week, the Neil Realist Artist, Neil Jenny, came to the Art Center. And he walked through it, and what he said, graduated from Torrington High School, and what he said, he's in all art history books. He said, there's nothing like this in Connecticut, no, nothing like this in New England. And we have gotten so many awards and recognition. I'd just like to see it culminated, if we can, to give promise and hope to other people that are working so hard for the arts in Torrington.
I would agree, and say we want to help people realize their dreams.
Thank you.
On this matter. And so I guess last up is Drake.
I'm all set.
Okay. You know, I have one more comment, though, to Molly's point, you know, having looked. So I brought the land lease agreement with me. I think, well, it's, it's attached to the materials anyway.
Yeah.
So the option to purchase does in fact include a clause that is a reversionary clause that says that even after the purchase, Five Points shall continuously and uninterruptedly operate for twenty years after the closing date. So there is a reversionary clause kind of built in.
Right.
So really, it's just a matter of, rather than wait fifteen more years, they're asking that it be done now.
And, and knowing that, I would feel comfortable doing it now. And, you know, to Steve's point, it's going to be him or I in a month and a half that's sitting here, and we're both in it.
There's no writing, there's no writing.
Well, maybe, but chances are it's going to be Steve or I. And both of us, I seem to be in agreement with doing this now, so.
So.
Bipartisan that way.
Yeah, there you go. So the only.
Stand the bandwagon. If, if they're both in agree, if both of these mayoral candidates are in agreement, they want to go forward now with this, then, then I'll support it. I'll support it.
Now, the only thing that I would add to this, and I should have when I read the, when I read the motion. So the acceleration of the lease agreement, I didn't write down who the, who the mover and second were. The, when this property was transferred by the University of Connecticut to the city of Torrington, it included the cell tower located on this property. And the expectation was that the revenue from the cell tower would be used to offset the $100,000 acquisition price for the excess acreage. To date, through year five of this lease, the cell tower revenue has resulted in the payment of $75,000 to the University of Connecticut. So with this motion for an acceleration of the option to purchase, I would ask that it include the negotiations for the payoff of the remaining $25,000 owed on that $100,000 acquisition price.
We are prepared to do that.
So, so really, I guess I should probably look at the amendment of the motion. So I read the motion is to amend the existing lease agreement with Five Points Center for Visual Arts to accelerate the exercise of the option to purchase period as requested, and authorize the mayor to, I'm going to use the language that we usually use, to execute, negotiate and execute any documents that are necessary to complete the transaction, including the continued payoff of the University of Connecticut. So Heather, help me. The motion was made by, okay, you'll amend the motion to include that language, authorizing. Okay, good. So, and you'll amend your second. So motion is made, amended, second as with the amendments. If there are no other questions, yes, other questions? Good.
No, we were just saying that, you know, it's true. Both our mayoral candidates are in agreement. We'd like to see that.
Yes.
You know, on, on multiple issues, so I.
It's a good moment.
It was, so was the existing mayor, so.
All right, so I too will support it.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to call the motion before there's any more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You don't need to be selfish about it. You've put a lot of work into it. Congratulations.
Pretty much all people have. Thank you all for your support.
Congratulations.
So appreciate it and hope we never disappoint you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you. We'll be in touch. We'll start working on the final documents, conveyance documents.
I could do a cartwheel.
I'm sorry?
I could do a cartwheel.
Oh, we could.
I'll catch you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, item five. I will entertain a motion to adopt the revised City Hall Room Use Policy and Fee Schedule establishing updated deposits, rental rates, custodial fees, and facility use requirements for public use of City Hall meeting rooms.
Almo.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilwoman Spino. Are there any questions or comments on the revised policy?
Town committees meet here. How is that covered in this, the fee charges? Well, it's a, it's a political organization, so it doesn't necessarily fall under the nonprofit criteria. Okay. Or, or make a handshake deal? Any, any concerns on that? Because both our town committees have used auditorium for monthly meetings.
Question to the council?
I don't know how to.
Nobody's concerned?
No.
And I don't know, do town committees file tax returns?
No.
And I think they do qualify as not-for-profits.
Okay.
No, they would have to be 501(c)(3).
You're not a 501(c)(3).
No, there, there's a state SEEK filing. That's only filing, but then not a tax return.
So I think there's, there's a lot of questions to this, so maybe it would be good to delay this vote until we know. Because I think it's a very good question. So.
For, for the next administration?
Yeah, keep delaying.
AKA lame duck.
No.
Yes. All right. Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not seconded.
So the motion was made by Councilwoman Rowett. So the motion was made by Councilwoman Rowett to table. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Then, all in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move into item number six. I will entertain a motion to update the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority, CMDA. This is really oddly worded motion. William, help me. I haven't, I haven't called this motion yet. I didn't ask for.
Right. So to be, to be clear, this should be a motion to, sorry. There, I don't know if there's necessarily a need for a vote. So in March of this year, the CMDA came and presented to the city council regarding the city of Torrington's option to opt into the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority. And under that certified resolution that was passed by the city council on March 3rd, the city council authorized at that point the mayor to enter into any agreements with CMDA. So this is just an update, I believe.
So the document provided in the council agenda was the update. Are there questions for William with regard to the update? Apparently, no motion needs to be made, no action needs to be taken. It's just informing you.
The reason why there might be confusion is because the memo that I provided indicated that the CMDA board is taking a vote last week, which they've already completed, to authorize the CMDA to enter into the agreement with the city of Torrington. Our city council already took that vote back in March and authorized the mayor to finalize that agreement. So now, where, where we are at in the process is that the CMDA has met with city representatives, including myself and the city planner. They provided a map, which it provided in your packet. The map outlines the general area for CMDA to essentially cooperate with the city for redevelopment projects focused around housing. The map that I provided is not 100% complete. There is some additional property that they're going to be including on the north end of the map, which is for additional properties that are zoned currently as R6 that we're going to add to this CMDA map. It, it is a bit more expansive than what our current downtown district includes. And the goal is for CMDA and the city of Torrington to partner in bringing in expertise for housing projects, also providing funding to support housing projects, and then finally to provide exposure, advocacy, and increase developer interest for work in the downtown district of the city of Torrington.
So we don't need to vote. You're just letting us know, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Any questions with regard to this?
William, what, looking at the map that was provided, a lot of lines around properties. Looks like you're including mostly commercial properties and some, but some residential. I see Park Avenue, Clarence Street on there, on the south end. What was the criteria for creating this particular district?
Yes. So that's a great question. So that, there are, the, the way that CMDA looks at is, we have a core downtown district and so CMDA essentially took a pinpoint, put it in that core downtown district, and then created a half-mile radius from that, that point. That circle, everything within that circle, they looked at all the properties, identified what zoning would be compliant with what CMDA authorizes. So downtown district is an automatic yes. They looked at local business, they looked at industrial, and they looked at the R6. Those were the other categories that fell within this half-mile radius circle. After CMDA reviewed our local business regulations and they reviewed our industrial regulations, our zoning regulations in R6, they made determination that downtown district and R6 were the most compatible with what they're looking to do. So the, the, you'll see the little white highlight down on the south portion. That's a local business that would not be included in this. If the city were to rezone that at some point into the downtown district, it would be added into the map. That's essentially what it, what the analysis was. There's one property that's on this map that's not included in the district, and it is the 100 Franklin Drive, which is the former Nidek site, currently zoned as industrial, with the goal that went, as the project proceeds through the brownfield process, gets cleaned up and gets started into the industrial, sorry, the redevelopment portion, that it would be rezoned into the downtown district, and at that point could be added back, or added into the CMDA and utilize the resources at the ring of the table.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Let's move into, you might as well stay there, right? We will move into item number seven. This is, again, in two parts, with regard to 100 Franklin Drive redevelopment, the Nidek site, or Nidek as, as the owners call it.
Right.
So, 7A is just a presentation, and for purposes of controlling the discussion, I will entertain a motion to receive the presentation and open the floor for discussion regarding the RFP proposal submitted by Penrose as the preferred developer. Do I have that motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All right. So the floor is open. Do you want to talk a little bit about the RFP process and introduce our preferred developer?
Absolutely. So thank you very much. We did start the RFP process back in June of this year. That was in order to create a more viable brownfield grant application. So the city's been partnered with the Brownfield Land Bank in order to remediate the 100 Franklin Drive property. In order for us to be competitive to get the full remediation grant funding, which we're anticipating is going to be between $4 and $6 billion, we need to do two critical things. One is have a pathway to ownership, and that is going to happen through the Brownfield Land Bank that we're partnering with. The second component is to have a developer, preferred developer, onboard with the city to redevelop the site. That RFP process started in June with the goal of having a preferred developer identified before our next funding round application would be in March of 2026. That process, we've gone through two different review committees. We had our final review committee meeting this afternoon, in which the review committee is recommending moving forward with Penrose and the Cloud Company. They're the same company that performed, or completed the 100 Franklin Street project, which is the Riverfront project. Today with me are Carmen Chung from Penrose. He's the, she was also the project manager for the Riverfront project. Come on in. And then Sandy Cloud and Anthony Hillis from the Cloud Company. So essentially, it did provide a lot of information in your packet, of which there are several renderings. Essentially, it is going to be two buildings, similar size, similar structure to the 100 Franklin Street building, a total of 120 apartment units, significant amount of parking on site, and then some first-floor commercial space. Additionally, they are going to extend the Nagatuck River Greenway Trail, essentially to the end of the peninsula there, with the option for future to create some connectivity over the river to Housenage Park area. There was a lot of back and forth between the city, the review committee, Penrose and the Cloud Company. Overall, they have been incredibly responsive and incredibly supportive. I think most importantly, incredibly excited to partner with the city to continue on with the redevelopment. They can already consider this phase two and phase three of the Riverfront project. So with that, I'll turn it over to the, the council for any questions, and then also to our.
If, and just for the council members' information, can you talk about who was the review committee that was engaged in doing this?
I mean, it was mostly myself. No, I'm just joking. It was a membership. We had three members from the Economic Development Commission who played a substantial role. We had, obviously, the mayor. Now that I made that bold statement, I got that really response. I'm blanking now on who the members of the committee were. We had a few Realtor, real estate developers on the, the committee. Yes. We had Diane Carroll as the real estate developer, John Fiorello. He's the chairperson of the Economic Development Commission. And Joel Sikorsky from the Senior Center, who had a lot of fantastic contributions. And then my office, Jeremy Leifer, the city planner, Nate Ardis Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. And there may have been one or two more additional people that I'm blanking on now. It was a pretty comprehensive committee, a lot of engagement, and they really did bring a lot of discussion, a lot of really good viewpoints to the table throughout the course of the repeal.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think for the council members that are worried about, what does this look like with the next administration? These are the other committees that are actually doing all of that work also, and this is not something that's coming straight from the mayor's office or the economic development's office. It is actually the committee members that volunteer and put in their time and effort. So I appreciate that. And if you want to turn it over to Carmen, and you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Very excited to be here. I'm Carmen Chung. I'm the Regional Vice President of the New England Region for Penrose, where a 50-year-old development company that operate all throughout the country, all the way from Colorado down to Texas, up to Massachusetts. And the New England region is the region that I oversee, which is primarily Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island right now. And we've been looking forward to this day, I think, for three years now, ever since Riverfront was completed. We kind of always considered that phase one, because when we even went through the RFQ process for Riverfront, we put together what we thought was going to be one of three phases. And now this has really come to fruition, and we really appreciate the collaborative spirit that we've seen already through this committee, all the feedback that we've been getting. I think what we enjoy doing is working with communities to achieve a shared vision. And I think right now is when we're building that vision together, figuring out what our priorities are, because it's going to be, every development is going to be a long road ahead. These projects don't happen over the course of two, three, four months. They take years to happen. And building that really strong foundation of understanding what the city council, what the mayor, and what community stakeholders want will help create that strong, I guess, team that will be rowing in the same direction to make sure that we hit everyone's goals. So we're very excited to be here tonight, and I'll hand it over to Sandy to say a few words from the Cloud Company.
Thank you, Carmen. I'm the mayor, members of the council. I'm Sandy Cloud, Chairman and CEO of the Cloud Company. We're a 20-year-old firm headquartered in Hartford. And about 20, almost 20 years ago, when we decided that we would focus our attention on trying to be helpful in transforming urban settings, particularly downtown settings and some neighborhoods, and focusing on affordable housing opportunities and mixed-use opportunities along with that. I started going around the country to try, find an appropriate partner. I'm a former public servant, served in the state senate for a number of years, a long time ago, and have been a senior executive at the Yatna, ran its national urban real estate program across the country, and served as president and CEO of National Conference for Humanity and Justice, originally known as National Conference of Christians and Jews, with some 62 regional offices around the country in 32 states, and after that decade of serving as president and CEO, came back home and formed this firm with my sons and, and my cousin, Anthony Hillis. And we ended up finding Penrose Properties out of Philadelphia. I spent several days there with their leadership and liked what I believe was the quality of the product they were producing in the, in the east of the, of the coast of, in Philadelphia, New Jersey, and liked their value set, particularly around engagement of community. To be sure that whatever they were building, it was, it had full community support and ideas. And so we've had a wonderful relationship over 20 years now. We're building affordable housing around the state. We have a major project, two major projects in Hartford. We had a, we're getting ready to do a major project in, down the road in, in Nagatuck with, with Mayor Hess and his leadership. We're looking at an opportunity in, in, in New Haven. We've run 151 units in downtown Meriden, near the train station. And we're looking to continue to go across the state, and we're very excited to be, have the opportunity, hopefully, to be back in Torrington. We enjoyed working. We're putting Riverfront together with the mayor and her team, and, and now with this council, and look forward to the opportunity to serve you, the people of Torrington.
Thank you, Sandy. Anthony, did you want to add anything? You're good? All right. So, to the council members' questions. And again, looking through the timeline, the council approved going out with an RFP for this property back in May. And as you heard Carmen say, these are processes. They take time. There's a lot of work that goes into developing a proposal, vetting the, you know, the prospects, looking at the property through the lens of not only its location, but what are the environmental issues that also need to be factored into any development project? The fact that this is cited contiguous to the existing Riverfront property, I think, made it a little bit easier for the Cloud Companies and Penrose to submit a proposal. When the RFQ was released, we only had two responses. It was Cloud Companies and Penrose partnering, and a second developer, Trinity Financial. So I think that speaks volumes to the developer interest in the city. We're making progress towards being an attractive destination for developers, but we're just not there yet. And the fact that Penrose and Cloud Companies see the value in continuing to invest in the city of Torrington, I do think speaks volumes to what they're bringing to the table. So, open to the council for questions about the process, about the, the concept that they're proposing.
So, one of the things that I've been hearing a lot about talking to residents in Torrington, going down the Senior Center, is senior housing. Would that be a possibility? Maybe one of these buildings being specific for, say, 55 and over community?
So, that's definitely a topic that came up in the review committee process. And I think it's balancing, one, how do we be competitive for the resources that we're trying to secure for the project, and it will be resources that will be largely coming from the state and federal government. So there, there is a lot of focus on family housing. But at the same time, we have been successful in creating non-age-restricted housing, but implementing a lot of changes in design, like roll-in showers, grab bars. So those things and accessibility improvements will naturally be more attractive and cater towards the senior population, and we can implement that so that there is a significant portion of units that include those increased accessibility design elements to cater and support a senior population.
Thank you.
Just curious, you know, when you did Penrose, you dedicated 10 of those units for people with disabilities.
Yes, that's right.
Curious whether that's the plan for any further relationship?
Yes. I've actually already, already spoken to Michael Menard at Lark and asked whether he had any interest in further collaboration, and he said definitely yes. So I think that we would look to include them, to have a set aside for the population that he supports also.
My, my next question is more, how, how has Penrose been going, the first phase?
The first Riverfront phase, yeah. We're fully occupied. Our commercial space is occupied by Cat Cafe, and we've actually, like, when we encounter other kind of state funders across the, the state, they were like, we. across the state, they were like, we just went to Torrington because of perks and paws. They have a really strong social media presence, so we've gotten a lot of, I guess, attention because of that commercial space. But the property is operating financially healthy, and, yeah, things are going really well at Riverfront.
Would you be looking again for an abatement, a tax abatement?
Yeah. All projects that I've done in Connecticut over the last nine years, every project that we've done, that's been a necessary part of the equation, because the revenue, we professionally manage these properties, and our property management company provides us with what they think is necessary from an expense perspective, to make sure that the property is pristine, that it looks great, and it's maintained well for the entire duration that we, we own and operate these in the long term. But it's that these properties look great day one, five years down the line, 10 years down the line. So from an expenses perspective and the revenue that this property can generate based on rents, the tax abatement is a necessary part to even just make sure we can break even, not even talking about raising additional debt to offset, to support capital costs. It's really, from a basic income perspective, there's not enough revenue to really make sure we can cover expenses if we aren't able to secure an abatement.
We are how many years into Riverfront at this point?
It was completed, I believe, in 2022.
The tax abatement was out for seven years?
For 15 years.
15.
And we're 16, yeah.
We're four years in. There are only 12 years left on that. And that wasn't a tax abatement. That was a pilot program that was adopted when the council agreed to go under the Community Development Act, which is Chapter 114 of the state statutes.
Would this be different?
Probably not.
It wouldn't be different. And one of the reasons why 15, 16 years is really important versus the, these properties are financed through something called low-income housing tax credits. And those, from a credit stream perspective, is 15 years, and our investors and our lenders will require to see that stability over 15 years.
And the, it's such a good question, and I appreciate the fact that you did bring it up with this conversation. Those are the things that would come back to the council for discussion. So, the vote that's being placed before the council on this agenda this evening is for the authority to start those negotiations. Obviously, all those negotiations would come back to the next council and next administration. But it has to start, and the sooner we start, the sooner Penrose and Cloud Companies can start working with those funders and those grant programs.
I'd jump in on the tax abatement question, just from an economic development perspective, looking particularly at this Nidec site. So, the Nidec site has sat in its current status since 2015. And I explained just a moment ago that in order for the city to be competitive, or for Land Bank to be competitive, to receive remediation dollars from the state of Connecticut, we need two components. One is a path to ownership, and two is a developer on the team in order to redevelop the site. Without those two components, the city would not be eligible, really, to receive any grant funding. So, that puts us in another category with dealing directly with Nidec in order for them to relinquish the property. Well, the city would be woefully inadequate to receive unclean property. That's a terrible saying, brownfield property, right? The liability that the city would incur by trying to take on a brownfield property like this would far outweigh the cost to just remediate the property, and then also the opportunity to bring a redevelopment agency onboard would just be prolonged even more. So we're already 10 years into a pretty well-blided property, an environmentally contaminated property, that without going through this RFQ process, without bringing on developer interest, would just continue in that same direction. We got a very clear, no mincing words indication from Nidec, we're not going to do anything with this property. We're not going to bet a dollar into this property to clean it up. And so, it took the city to pivot in order to find another pathway around. And the other pathway around is to bring a land bank in, which will take on the liability requirements, and then be able to clean up the property. The part of the RFQ that we published was not necessarily that we wanted a housing. It was a request for developers that do mixed use, but housing was definitely a preferred interest. So I just wanted to kind of lay that groundwork to explain that if, if any developer came into the city of Torrington wanting to do any type of repurposing in this property, it would be wildly expensive upfront. And two, it would be almost a effort in futility unless we were able to get the partnership to get the remediation dollars. And a part of getting the partnership is for the partner to figure out what do the capital stack elements need to be put in place in order for a redevelopment project to fruition.
And if I may, you mentioned 2015. Actually, the Nidec Corporation closed this manufacturing building in 2006. So here we are, sitting on a bladed piece of property for the past 20 years. It actually was caving in on itself at one point, which is, it was probably about 10 years ago.
Many pursuit lawsuits.
We did. We went after them to take that building down to avoid further public safety and public health issues. So, it is a challenging piece of property, not only because its ownership is a corporation that is based out of Japan. It's contaminated, it's bladed, it's strategically located right across from Fusage Park, which to us has always been a very attractive development point. And working with a known quantity made it a little bit easier for us to bring this to this council. So.
Okay. Can I have two questions? Are all the brownfields tested and known? Is that a known quantity at this point, where we stand on that property?
So, we, in, we being the city and New Colony Development Corporation, that's the brownfield land bank. The brownfield land bank received $200,000 in June of this year, for which they are initiating that assessment process. They're bringing LEP in within the next few weeks in order to do that final assessment work. The answer, the real answer to your question is, no, we don't. The outcome of this assessment project will give us both the known quantities and a probable cost estimate to complete the remediation. We'll utilize that data for the subsequent grant application. We're looking towards March of 2026 for that grant application.
Okay. And just looking at the map, I see a Greenway Bridge across the river. And so curiosity there, but the path sort of stops there. Is there any opportunity to continue that trail hugging the property to, back to the road? So, is that a possibility? So if people just want to get back out to the road, they could go on the trail and go back?
Yeah, that's something that we can look at.
Okay, thank you. I have to get my little asks in there somewhere. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have, Mary. You know very well that you and I have been pretty much on the opposite side of this whole process here in Torrington. Just to clear the air, you guys are a for-profit corporation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people think that you are not, so you're, you know, a not-for-profit. But, so your money comes from the tax abatement? What, how do you, let me ask, let me ask the question this way. I've asked several, several different people, several different groups, and I've gotten several different answers. Okay. Let's say in an affordable housing situation, you've got a market value apartment that's, say, 1,800 a month, and if the person who qualifies for that can only pay 1,000 a month, who pays the delta? Who pays the 800? Where's that come from?
So, I guess, let me start with kind of defining the types of units. There are affordable units, and there are market rate units. For one of the buildings, it would be probably 80%, 80% of it would be capital A affordable, and 20% of it would be market. For the affordable units, we would be putting a deed restriction on it that would be placed by the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and the Department of Housing, placing an affordability deed restriction on the property for the affordable units at different income tiers, meaning, let's say, area median income is 100,000. Some of them would be set at 30% area median income, which is mostly the set-aside units that City Councilor Rouet was talking about that we worked with Lark on. A vast majority of the other units would be at 50% of AMI. So, just using round numbers, let's say 50,000 is the income limit for someone living in a 50% AMI unit. So our rents would be based on what HUD, the federal government, sets as an afford, what they deem an affordable rent for that unit, for someone in that income bracket. That is the rent that is on their lease. That is the rent that they will need to pay. We income-certify every person that moves into the project, and we make sure that they are within a certain bracket that makes them qualify, meaning that they are under the limit that CHAF, DOH, the Department of Housing, and HUD have set for that unit, but making sure that they are also not overly stretched in meeting that. So we have to balance a lot of things when we are evaluating an individual for tenancy. So that is their rent, and yes, there is an income component as to, they have to qualify for the unit, but once they're in that unit, their rent is their rent, just like any other renter.
Yeah, but I understand that. But I'm trying to say, where do you, you're a for-profit company. In addition to the tax abatement, you're not paying taxes, or, you know, not the going rate of taxes, it's scalable, but initially you're paying very low taxes. In addition to that being part of your profit model, how else are you making money if you're renting an $1,800 apartment for $1,000?
So, the tax, the taxes is not part of how we generate revenue. The property actually, when the state looks at our financing application, they look at, what is our cash flow over the next 15 years? What is our expenses? What is our revenue? And they limit how much, basically, cash flow we are generating over the next 15 years. So there's no real income. It's kind of really a cushion for if we have a really bad snow year, or we have some unexpected expense. There's not real cash flow that comes off of the property through revenue. How all developers that build affordable housing, no matter if they are nonprofit or for-profit, they, how they, I guess, earn money to pay the people who work at the nonprofit or for-profit, is a capital, I guess, a developer fee that is tapped by the state, and it's a formula as to how, it's a, it's almost like we're a fee-for-service sort of entity, and the state, Department of Housing, the Connecticut Housing Finance Agency, they have a formula that they're like, okay, this is the amount that you can earn based on all the work you put in through years of investment, of paying for architects, paying for engineers, to put together the financing application. That typically takes us over a million dollars to put in an application that's competitive, whether we may or may not. It's a, it's not a, you automatically get funding, and there is a sliding scale that the state allows us to put into the capital stack when we are financing the project.
All right. I'll be perfectly honest. I didn't understand a good part of that. Let me, let me, again, I'm a city councilman. I'm here to, in my opinion, okay, make a good deal for the city and protect the people who put me in office. What am I, the, I don't see these. I just do not see this type of development as really spurring economic development for downtown Torrington. I know businesses who are right across from Penrose, and down the street, and around Torrington, they will tell you, you know. The reality is that people who need to be, have subsidized housing cannot afford to spend a lot of money downtown. They just don't have the disposable income, pure and simple. They sure as heck can't afford expensive theater tickets. They're not going to go to the art gallery, and they're not going to be buying 18, 19-dollar hamburgers with their friends. So it does not accomplish that goal. There is the additional expense of, without paying, you know, with a tax abatement, you're not contributing to paying for infrastructure, basically for services, for police, fire, emergency services, street cleaning, street plowing, all those things. It's not coming from Penrose. Other taxpayers are picking up that tab. So I don't see where that's a net plus for Torrington residents. You give me a proposal here, I'm looking at proposed project details, and I, and I'm sorry to pick on you folks standing in front of me, but I've been through a lot of these, okay? And I've seen so many diagrams. My brother's an architect, and I know how to look at these things. But these proposals, you know, your amenities. You're really going to have a fitness facility, a residential lounge, roof decks, community green and plaza, playgrounds, fitness area, amphitheater, dog park, pickleball courts. This is, this is nonsense. You're telling me you're going to have all this in these two apartments, when you have none of these in the current one?
The Riverfront does have a roof deck. It does have a fitness center, and it does have a resident lounge.
It does, the resident lounge, I know, but it does have a fitness center?
It does.
Does it have a birdwatch pavilion? No, that's, that's, I'm, I just, I'm going to take the position, Mayor, like I did earlier with Five Points Gallery, the same position. I, to me, here's another question. You said that these are going to be family-oriented. Did I hear that correctly, these two projects, these two, number two and three, however you want to call them?
There, it, it sounds like there's a desire to actually have some units also be catering towards seniors. So even though it's not going to be age-restricted, there will be some units that will also, we're going to design to be catering to the seniors.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, as you would probably not assume, I'm not speaking on behalf of seniors. Now, what I am speaking on is the cost of children in Torrington, okay, educational. I mean, we're at $23,000 to $24,000. Those are the figures that I got from you about a year ago in Torrington, you know. So roughly, if you get 30 kids in these, in these 120 units, if you get about 30 kids, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 700,000 to 800,000 dollars a year. And if you're not paying property taxes, who's going to be paying for that? It's the taxpayers again. So, I'm looking at this as a business deal. This is a business deal. I don't see it as economic development for downtown Torrington. I don't think these are, there's been no evidence so far in the three years that the residents of Penrose have contributed in any significant way to economic development downtown Torrington. There just isn't. I mean, and I've asked tons of people down there. I've been down there frequently in that area. I've seen buses pull up at the end, and I've seen a lot of kids get off the buses and go in there. There's no place to play for the Penrose kids. I don't know if you know that, but they're playing in the streets. I don't know if anybody's telling you differently, but they're literally playing, oh, yes. Oh, yes.
The playground.
If I could, if I could just, I'm an economic, I don't want to interrupt.
So I'm going to say, yeah, and I'll cut this short, because I'm not looking to debate. What I am looking to do is, I'm not going to support this, but I really believe going down this road should, once again, we're going to have a new government, we're going to have a new, a new bunch of people sitting here. They should be making this decision. They should be making this evaluation for going down this long, long journey. And so I'm going to vote no. And I would strongly suggest that this come back when you've got a new mayor and a new city council sitting here, and talk them into why this is a good deal for Torrington.
I understand that you're not looking to debate. I would just present the alternative. And if we look at the Phase One, the Riverfront property.
Yeah.
The alternative is that The alternative is that that's city-owned property.
Yep.
That doesn't get redeveloped. With the Nidec site, the alternative, you're working with a developer, any developer, the fine folks from Penrose and the top company, the fine, fine folks from Smith Baseball Bad Development Corporation, I just made that up. It doesn't matter, right? The alternative to working with any developer who looks to actively partner with the city to redevelop the site, the alternative is that the site sits. It's been sitting for twenty years, nineteen years, there.
I get that.
The alternative is that the site remains as it is, which is more counterproductive to economic development, despite any, any number of people, what their economic capacity is to contribute to the economy of downtown Torrington, what their capacity is to be a paralegal, or a paraprofessional, or a CNA, or a X-ray technician, or someone who's entering into the workforce only making forty thousand dollars, who can't afford a single bedroom unit because there is a lack of availability in the city of Torrington. The alternative is that we don't create one hundred and twenty units by 2030. The alternative is that the weeds that are growing there, that are twenty feet high in 2030, they're twenty-five feet high. That's the alternative to this, that we're talking for economic development purposes. You're not going to get, you're not going to get, to be frank, you're not going to get a developer to come to the city of Torrington to invest, you're not going to get the state of Connecticut to partner with developers if we don't put together a complete package. We're not going to get, this is flat out the case, we're not going to get developers come to Torrington to invest in our city, in a city that deserves to be invested in, if we don't put together a complete package. Of which, part of that package is figuring out what the tax alternative is to enable the project to go forward. I understand that you're not in favor, not debating with you, however, the whole package, what a development means, sorry if I sound emotional, I'm not trying to be, the whole package for what a development means, the tax abatement is a portion of it. If we do not proceed with any developer who wants to pursue a tax abatement, we have the Nidec site sitting stagnant for twenty more years, with weeds growing.
And that is your perspective, and it's binary, and I'm just saying, I, my best judgment, representing my, my city is this, my best judgment is right now, is to let the new, let the new government sit, get fresh eyes, new eyes on the problem, and let them make this decision. It's only six, we're a couple of weeks away from that, so.
That's right.
But, again, alternatives, and I want to give the whole picture for the decision that you're making.
Yeah.
Is that if we, if we don't pursue, if we don't proceed sooner, and I know six weeks may not sound like a lot to you, that inhibits Penrose's ability to negotiate the terms for purchase and sales agreement, which inhibits their ability to get a pathway to ownership for the property, which inhibits our ability to get a remediation grant submitted in the month of March, which inhibits our ability to get boots on the ground to clean up the property, which inhibits our ability to have Penrose on site construct the project. All of these things have cascaded, and I know six weeks doesn't sound like a lot, but six weeks, and we were talking about March, to negotiate a purchase and sales agreement, the corporation out of Japan, every day that we pass, we've been doing this since May of 2025 of this year, it's taken us that long just to get in front of the city council to make this recommendation? And all of that was intentional, all that was intentional because we're gearing towards getting ready for that March 2025 application. We don't get the remediation grant awarded. Their CHAF application, assuming it's Penrose, their CHAF application for the tax credit, they can't submit it because they don't have the backing for the remediation. Everything falls, it doesn't fall apart, nothing will fall apart, we'll make this happen no matter what. Not in spite of you, or despite you, what I'm saying is, we'll make this happen because we need to, we, we as a city, we need to make a smart deal for the city, we need to make a deal that makes this a viable redevelopment project.
And I'm just suggesting that there's going to be a new government here in a couple of weeks, and let them make the smart decision, they will own it, and they will have to live with that decision.
And you will have, and you, you have, you're, I'm not trying to argue, if it sounds like it, I'm not trying to, but there are implications to push, there are, there are serious implications to pushing this further down the line.
May I just add one, one comment? Councilman, I totally appreciate your, your position as a, as a lawyer, former lawyer, and as a developer of many, many years, I've been in housing for a long time, been about mixed income housing for, well, twenty years specifically, but before that, helped to revitalize neighborhoods in Brooklyn and New York with the Yatna and other places around the country. And I just want to suggest to you that the, there is economic development opportunity with mixed income housing. We're not getting the poorest of the poor that are going to be inhabiting, that's why there's a split of eighty percent affordable units.
Right.
And twenty percent market. Well, that twenty percent represent a fair amount of units, and they do have dollars to go and spend them in the other part of downtown, and get, they are your teachers, they are your beginning teachers, they are your young professionals, they are your police officers, they are the hospital workers. So there is a mixture there of people, and the fact of the matter is, William has indicated, this is a transformational opportunity for the city, which, by the way, as you know, does have a housing crisis, at least with this back to its moderate income residents, whether they're seniors, or whether they're young professionals, or whether they're starting off in positions in, in the public system. So I just want to be sure that there's, there's some clarity, that this is not, and one of the big challenges that we always face is that the capital stack, putting together the capital stack, takes a lot of different sources, and the tax abatement happens to be one of them. It's not the only one, it's not the most expensive part of it, and eventually, there's going to be a traction of economic development opportunity in this wonderful city, downtown Torrington, next to what we've already developed for the city.
Thank, thank you for, thank you for that. You know, what if, it's too late, we're going to move on, and I know everybody, and I'm not, I'm going to lose this vote, and that's fine, but I really would have, this has been three, at least, well, now in the development phase, five years of dealing with this, I've never been able, and I would have loved this presentation, which showed me, we've already got a test facility in here called Riverfront, I would have loved to have seen exactly the breakdown, give me the breakdown of who actually rented here with these income levels, who's actually there? I hear stories about Section Eight housing, that was this, then it's this, and now it's this. I hear lots of different stories about it, that it was minimal, then they expanded it, then they contracted it. So I'm trying to make a decision based on information that, no, that I can't seem to get, here's, here's the perfect, there's an example, there's a model, it's done, it's built. Give me the data, show me exactly who's renting, exactly how you're going to make money, and how the city of Torrington is going to benefit from this. If I had that in front of me, I would, like that, go with you guys. I mean, so, but I still feel like that's a decision that, at this point in time, you know, the newly sitting city council should be making and living with that decision. That's what I think. Anyway, I'm only one vote, and you're going to get, you're going to get this passed, so why don't we just move on?
I just also want to remind the council members, as I said, the pilot program for the Riverfront project was sixteen years, we're already four years in, it's twelve short years from them being fully taxed. You look at Keystone, another great housing opportunity for our seniors, they received a seven-year tax deferment, it's not an abatement, they're never receiving less than we received prior to the development, they're one of our top ten taxpayers, you know, this, that was a seven year, yes.
It was in seventeen, isn't it?
It's a different model also, it's, it's a very different model than what, what we're faced with, what are the, what are the demands for housing in the city of Torrington? So as I, when I introduced this topic, I reminded everybody that developers are not beating the doors down to come to the city of Torrington, we're not there yet, you know, and particularly for that site, you've got a piece of property that is contaminated, it's challenging, right across the street from it is the Eversource infrastructure, not an attractive area to be developed, however, all of that potential with building in these amenities, that, and this close, we talked about extending that trail, I think I heard Councilman Iveyne ask about the trail, Joel Sikorski specifically said, wouldn't it be great if that trail actually went to the front door of the Sullivan Senior Center? You know, and these affordable units, that's your elderly population. So those are the only things that I also wanted to remind, and then open it up to other council members.
I just wanted to say, you know, because the location, you know, to your point, William, I don't really want to see thirty-foot, you know, weeds over there, and it is a site that is not attractive, attractive to other developers, and I, I also feel we do need housing, how many, you know, how many studies have we done where we've talked about the need for housing? And, you know, this is really an opportunity, I think, that, I think it has been successful, at least my experience with people who are living there are so happy, and the fact that it's fully filled, I'm happy about that, and I can't imagine them not going out and buying a cup of coffee, or unfortunately, we don't have a Stop and Shop anymore that's closed that they can walk to, but that's going to happen, that new development's going to happen, hopefully, with a, with that private property, but, you know, I'm, I'm going to go with this, because I do think it's an opportunity for people, and I think Mayor Carboni had used her son in a scenario years ago about not having much of an income, not having a housing ability, other than maybe her basement, so, you don't have a basement though, do you? Either way, you want to, you really want to keep our youth here, and, you know, they're making thirty, forty, fifty thousand a year, hopefully going to Northwestern Community College, hopefully going to Five Points, you know, learning about arts, so I, you know, I will be supporting this, I think it's important for the use of that specific property at this time. Thank you.
Are there other comments from the council?
I would.
Councilman?
I think this is a tremendous project, and I commend you people for coming here tonight, and we'd be foolish to not approve it, I mean, that property needs to be developed, so, that's all I can say at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Right, yeah.
Good comments from our two mayoral candidates, I would like to hear their opinions, they don't have to, but I'd like to hear it.
Sure.
If they're so inclined.
Sure. I think we're in a unique position with this property, I, like you said, there aren't developers knocking down our doors, trying to develop that parcel. You know, we have somebody, we have Penrose who's come here and proven that they can do the job, and built a beautiful building on Franklin Street. I agree with Paul, I would like to hear from council members, our new council that will be coming on, it's also important to me to listen to the taxpayers too on this, but I'm a little concerned that we're, you know, on a time, timeframe with this. You know, I'm inclined to approve this, I do have a little, some questions and concerns, and I'd like to hear the public's input on it too.
All right, I will be approving this, I want to keep this project on track as proposed. I do want that little trail, you know, added on, but besides that, we have that existing track record with you already, I appreciate that, thank you for the cleanup and what's being proposed here. I like the green space and the park space that's added on here, it was a little bit small on the Riverfront development, but this is substantial here, so thank you for doing that.
All right, I'm going to call this motion. So all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So motion carries, and I will remind the council that the motion was for the mayor to negotiate and execute, so this obviously is going to transition into the next administration, and that mayor, obviously, any conversations that we have after this evening and after the election would include that next administration. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
This evening. All right, item eight. This is a tax abatement request for eleven Main Street. I will entertain a motion to approve the request of Torrington Main Street Development Corporation to grant a tax abatement for certain real property located at eleven Main Street in accordance with Torrington's tax incentive policy as described in the Economic Development Director's letter.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. Do I have a second? Is there, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Walton. Okay, so, motion is made and seconded, William, do you want to talk a little bit about your memo and the project?
Sure, so, good evening again, I'd love to follow that conversation with the tax abatement request. So the project was taken underway around 2023, did receive DECD grant in order to facilitate the construction, repurposing the building for seventeen apartment units, and refurbishing the first four commercial spaces. The apartment units are complete, the developer received certification of occupancy in July of this year, last report I got, and this was about a month and a half ago, nine of the seventeen units had been rented out, and other applications had been received, they just not had been fully processed. I think I mentioned to the city council at a previous meeting that one of the spaces used to be a doctor's office, that is now being rented out by a doctor, which is kind of just a cool turn. The property when purchased had a assessment value of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The current assessment value is one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and under the current city Torrington tax abatement policy, because it's in the downtown district, and it has affordable housing as a component, qualifies for a five-year schedule, increasing from zero percent in the first year, and then increasing to twenty percent, forty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent in subsequent years, and at the end of this fifth year, will go up to the full hundred percent of the assessed value for the property. On the second page of my memo, I don't know what page it is on your document, but it did provide a breakout, it only qualifies for the real estate property, does not qualify for an abatement of any personal property, and the breakout is three categories, if no project had been done, over a ten-year period would generate just eighty, maybe eighty-seven thousand in tax revenue. If the project was done but no abatement was added to it, it would generate roughly five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in tax revenue, and if the project's completed, which it is complete, and the abatement schedule's applied, would generate four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. If the project wasn't completed, so the difference between a project not being completed and the building standing as it was ten years from now, it's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in tax revenue if the abatement is approved, so, in all, I think it was, for my personal and professional experiences, a really successful project for downtown Torrington, repurposed the building, repurposed the commercial spaces, the developer also completed the sidewalk space in front of that entire area of Main Street, all the way up to Water Street intersection. That's just the quick synopsis I have, happy to answer any questions.
Floor is open for questions. Councilwoman Rouwett?
Thank you, Mayor. Love the work, you know, that Mr. Capelletti has done, you know, particularly for the old Mertz Building, and now for this building, just so happy that he has sort of taken on an interest in Torrington, and continues to, I don't know, care about us, and, you know, that's unique. I will not be supporting the tax abatement for this project, he did get the money from the state, but I don't want it to appear, I don't want to discourage the applicant at all, or the developer of this project, and the other buildings, but I just feel at this point, we need, the pity of people of Torrington, you know, all the conversations that we all have are about taxes, and particularly in this next year, you know, they'll be getting even higher taxes, property taxes, so I think to really approve, you know, a completed project once again, no, just, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to support the tax payment.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments from the council?
Yes. Similar to what Councilwoman Rouwett- Similar to what Councilwoman Roupet said, you know, Mr. Capelletti has done incredible job. This is his second building that he's completed here in Torrington. And I greatly appreciate the investment that he has here. He really seems to care about our community. But we're talking about taxes, we're talking about commercial building, our commercial base. That's what we need right now to help offset that balance with our residential properties. And, you know, he did receive grant funds to build this, so it wasn't completely out of pocket. But I have to look at the project over the person. And I appreciate, again, everything Mr. Capelletti's done, but I will have to vote no for this tax payment.
I, I'm in favor of this tax abatement. You know, in most cases, I'm leery about tax abatements, but this, this project and his other projects in town have definitely added to Main Street, Torrington, have continued to be a value plus for our city, for, for housing storefronts, downtown properties and beautification along our riverways. I, I would hope that we could rethink that incentive for him to take on more buildings of this nature and continue the redevelopment of downtown in this way.
I think for me, it's just the timing, you know, and we all had to sort of grin and bear it at this last budget. And that was a word by, sort of a phrase my mother used, but I think, unfortunately, I think because of the timing, I don't think we can support a tax abatement.
Well, it's a tremendous increase in value of the property itself from that 226,000 to the new values. So.
Quite aware of the numbers, but, you know, we're talking to each other, which is unusual, but.
So if I could, from just the Economic Development Director's perspective, what the role a tax incentive policy plays in, in bringing developers, retaining developers, and then getting the most bang for our buck in the highest quality product that we can for the city of Torrington, right? And to Councilman Cavanero's comment earlier, making the best business deal for Torrington. So if you just allow me to make a pitch for why the tax incentive policy is a good thing and using tax incentive to drive higher quality housing development, specifically in the downtown district. We're talking about now two successful housing projects that one developer has taken on. And some of you may know, but not all of you probably do know, the same developer, Vince Capelletti, is in my office once or twice a week, talking my ear off about what project he wants to take on next. And though I understand completely the reservation about what it means to give a tax abatement to a developer, especially in this time, this project has been underway since 2023. The purchase of the property occurred in 2023. The project has gone through its revolution of, you know, figuring out how to build that capital stack in order to make it a successful improvement for the downtown district. The offset for not approving the tax incentive is, over a ten-year period, the city gains, just trying to do rough numbers in my head, $144,000 over a ten-year period. That's an increase of $144,000 from one property over a ten-year period. Inversely, in my opinion, and so take it for what it's worth, it may not be worth much to you, but from my opinion, not providing a tax abatement for a property like this and a project like this, it creates a situation, I would say a high likelihood of a situation where this second or third project that Vince Capelletti is looking to take on, he doesn't take on. And so now we've got a property that is not generating much tax revenue and doesn't have a developer that's necessarily interested in taking on that property. And so five years from now, that property is still at the same level it was. And so there are, there are reasons for providing tax abatement. I think part of that reason for your consideration is in the grand scheme, not necessarily tied to one particular project, but in the grand scheme of investment in the best business deal for the city of Torrington. I think, and I would argue passionately, that the best business deal for the city of Torrington is to utilize the tax incentive policy and provide tax abatements for projects that qualify in order to drive that increasing development, to target those additional properties that aren't generating a lot of tax revenue now, that seven years from now could be generating significantly more tax revenue. Though we would lose, in 2026, lose is a loose term because we're not losing anything, in my opinion. We would lose in 2026 potential for a difference of $47,000 towards our overall tax revenue. In the long term, I would argue the city of Torrington stands to gain a lot more by utilizing our tax incentive plan that we, that is on the books, encouraging developers to apply for it in cases that are not appropriate. The most recent tax incentive that I brought to the city council was 444 Betel, it's a mini micro storage, did not get approved. You know what happened after that? The developer came into my office a little bit frustrated. I said, it didn't meet, it didn't meet the code, it didn't meet the standards, it's not what it is. His answer was, well, I'm looking to do this other thing, and I think I'll just go to another town. I said, well, tell me about the thing you want to do. Well, I want to build a certain thing, it's kind of like an arcade or recreational thing. He said, well, what if we go down a path and we engage city council earlier, we figure out that's something more amenable to them for a tax abatement? Oh, you would do that? I think that's a better way to do it. Now, he's actively pursuing this project in Torrington with the idea of engaging city council in a more proactive way, figure out if it's more amenable to city council. So he, this developer is still looking at the city of Torrington as a viable redevelopment community, right? Whereas if I said, sorry, bro, you're going to have to look elsewhere, he would be looking elsewhere. And I think that, I just caution that with Vince Capelletti and other developers who are looking to actively pursue additional projects in Torrington, we risk creating that to look elsewhere for projects. And that's just the bigger picture, the longer picture that I hope to impress upon the city council tonight.
Mayor Carbonne?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in. Mr. Wallach's argument has persuaded me. It was a, it was a very convincing argument, and I, I agree with you.
I am not doing cartwheels. I am not doing cartwheels.
That requires a backflip.
Yeah.
Okay. I, yeah, I agree with you. I, I think, look, we, you know, council's going to give a tax abatement to these out of this other development project, which has, you know, a lot of question marks as to the viability of it, as to how it will or will not contribute positively to downtown development. We know that what Capelletti's doing will. We know that he, that his projects, to me, are absolutely, they certainly should be in the mix of the kinds of projects that we want in town, particularly downtown Torrington, to get foot traffic down there, to get people with money to burn, to spend it on our local retailers. And, and I think he's gone a long way to demonstrating how to get that done. And I think we do, I think it's definitely in our interest as a business proposition to reward that kind of effort and give him this tax abatement, considering, you know, anyway, yeah, I would definitely support doing this for the arguments that you just spelled out for us. Yeah.
So William, with this schedule, if I'm looking at it correctly, year two, we're headed equation. If Vinnie did not develop this property, we'd be at the current value, which had a total of, in ten years, eighty-seven thousand. And with the new value, but with the abatement schedule, you know, we're break even year one, and year two, we're $10,000 ahead. And it keeps on ticking upwards through that schedule.
That's correct.
So there's not much revenue lost because it is graduated, and it's a great improvement of a property. And I like Vinnie to develop a few more properties around the Main Street. So I already picked them out.
Thank you, Councilman Ivan. Councilman Waldrin, anything to add?
Oh, yeah. What, I love what he's doing with these properties, but in this situation, wouldn't it be standard procedure to apply for this before he started the project?
So the tax incentive policy does not require that. I don't know if there is a standard procedure. I think that's, I think that's a good recommendation. He and I started, I started here June of 2024, so almost eighteen months ago. And that was one of my first conversations with him, was what are we doing about the tax incentive? And it took him, honestly, until completing the project in September to actually submit the application to me. A lot of that is because he is not only the owner, he's a member, just like the Hair Club for Men. He's doing all the construction work on a daily basis. He is a full-time employee of his own corporation, doing all the construction work. I don't think that's really an excuse, that's a great business excuse, but it's just the reality of the situation, that he is also managing the entire project himself. So I think he put off the tax incentive portion until the very last minute, which I brought that up with other developers already, that this is something we need to do proactively.
But he got a good chunk of money with this project in form of a grant.
He did, yes. The project did receive 1.4 million dollars of grant funding towards the project. And that 1.4 million is an important number, not because of what the, not because of the 1.4, but this is a historic property. The cost to repurpose and redevelop any historic property is multiples higher than it would be to not follow the historic preservation requirements. So because of that, that 1.4 million dollars offset a significant amount of the costs that would normally be to not follow historic preservation requirements. If you've been in the building, he will talk to you ad nauseam about all of the detailed historic preservation work that he did in order to maintain that internal components of the property, but also the external facade elements of the property.
You're good? Everyone's good?
No, I'm, I'm going to chime in again. You're very convincing tonight. I understand your argument. And we have somebody, like I said when I spoke earlier, Vinnie Capelletti has done incredible work in Torrington, he's developed two buildings, and I'm very impressed with the work that he's done. With that being said, I think going forward, I would like to see these come to council maybe before.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Projects are done, because it is an incentive. I don't like granting these after the fact, but your argument tonight was very convincing. And, you know, we need the developers in Torrington. By year two, we are over what the taxes are now. You've convinced me. Thank you.
Okay, last call before I call this motion. We're good? Everyone's ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And one opposed for the record, but the motion does carry.
Paul and I are sharing these.
I was just going to say, you're flip-flopping, you're just switching each other. Yeah. All right. Thank you, William.
Thank you.
But stay where you are, right? So item number nine, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary agreements with the city of Torrington revolving loan fund for a loan of up to $79,000 in Brownfield Cleanup Revolving Loan Funds at no interest to support remediation work at the former Stone Hindi property, 105 Summer Street and 200 Ledgefield Street. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I need to request the amendment to that.
What, oh, the amendment to 73,000. Yeah, thank you. We just talked about that this morning. So, I'm sorry, so Councilwoman Spino, will you amend your motion? It would be up to 73,000.
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ivan. All right, and the floor is open for discussion. Do you want to talk?
With the $79,000 bias, which.
Some assessment money.
They can set up a tent and they can get some, I mean, I'm just curious, if there's a reason they use that number, what is that number for?
That, so that number, 73,000, represents the balance of what is left in our revolving loan fund right now.
Oh, okay.
Right? So you'll recall two weeks, two weeks ago, two meetings ago, the council approved to loan out 169,000 for the 245 East Elm Street project. And that leaves a balance in the revolving loan fund of 73,000. And you're right, when you look at that Hindi site, and particularly now with all of the rubble and the brick and the, you know, and the dangerous situation that exists as a result of the fire, we are put in a position where we must cobble together all of our resources. We will be working with the NVCOG and the Regional Brownfield Partnership, which the city council approved joining back in 2015. We need to demonstrate to DECD, where there is a pending grant application, that we are ready, willing, and able to start identifying what the contamination is and what the cost will be to remediate the property so that we can get to work right away.
We're in the five, $10 million range, I would think, for remediation, right? I mean, that's.
And we don't know because we've never been able to get in the soil to determine what is the contamination in the soil. We were in the buildings, we knew there was hazardous building material that does need to be remediated, commingled now with all of the clean brick. But the whole goal, utilizing our revolving loan fund and working with the Regional Brownfield Partnership, is to sort of separate all those piles. What's clean can be salvaged or sent to a clean disposal, and what's contaminated and is going to have to go somewhere that's more expensive. We've been exceedingly fortunate. On Monday morning, on September 30th, the first phone calls we were making were to the governor, to DECD, to DEEP, to EPA, which is the original funding source of these funds, and to the NVCOG and RBP. You know, those acronyms mean nothing to people listening, that's the Regional Brownfield Partnership, to start deciding where are the resources, how quickly can we activate those resources? And I can tell you, they've done several site visits. They're, they've issued RFQs for, excuse me, for LEP work that needs to be done to do that assessment work. And I'm just trying to pull all this stuff together, because as I've been reminded with every motion this evening, this project is going to be handed off to a new administration. And the more groundwork that I can do before I leave in identifying those resources, the faster that work can be done with the new administration.
Yeah, no, totally support this.
Yeah, okay. Questions?
What's the regional source of the funds?
That was so, and those are the EPA revolving loan funds. I think you'll all recall, I told the story when I took office in 2013. Five days into office, I received a letter from EPA saying, yeah, send us our money back, you're not ever going to be able to put that money to work. And we were able to save $670,000 by going to work on the Franklin Street property. So it is EPA funding that we saved when we worked as fast as we could to do cleanup on Franklin Street. So over the last thirteen years, we've been paying ourselves back against that loan. We've been able to put some of those loans, those funds out to work for the, for the community by loaning out to 245 East Elm Street. I think this, this fund has done great things for our community, and I will tell you, EPA is exceedingly pleased with what we've done with this money.
Okay, great. And DEEP and EPA did some site visits immediately after fire. Was there any findings or is that just a risk review, or where did we land on that?
Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, sure. So there's no findings. DEEP essentially defers to EPA at this point. EPA had both emergency response come out initially, gave the determination, the emergency response says they can handle it locally. We requested that their Brownfield team come out. The Brownfield team came out and they did kind of a neighborhood assessment. They looked at what are the, what are the components residential within the immediate impacted area? And so their assessments, not an environment assessment, just a neighborhood assessment, was that this was much higher level of an emergency that could not be necessarily handled at the local level. at the local level. So, the EPA team is back, reevaluating how they can access funds in order to provide more immediate support for the containment of the contaminated materials on site. Obviously, with the government shutdown, their, their ability to do the administrative portions for administering funds is limited. So, they, working with NVCOG and the Regional Brownfield Partnership, said, you, Regional Brownfield Partnership, initiate as much funding as you can in order to cover the time gap. So, we're, we're figuring out what that amount is, what they're able to do. And with all of this dollars floating out there, I think it's incumbent, Ohio, in the city, to commit whatever funding it has as a first source in, and that just happens to be a measly seventy-three thousand dollars at this point. It won't buy much, to answer your question. It won't, it won't pay for much, but what it will do is activate those other sources of funds to come in right behind.
All right, I heard, I heard a call to vote. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, before I do call that vote, I just want to also add, this is the revolving loan fund. You know, there are other opportunities for us when we go into some of our blight funds. So, you may find the request back to this council or to the next council, that we access additional funding resources that may be available to us. So, I'm just planting those seeds. I'm gonna call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pricing quote approved by the Parks and Rec Commission from Daryl Green. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Can I, just for the record, twenty-nine thousand, seventy-four dollars and eighty cents.
See? Move it.
So, I heard. I actually had a motion and a second on the floor. And I also heard the gasp at the, at the price. And I know that our purchasing agent has made some recommendations going forward when it comes to funding these. And I don't know, Penny, if you wanted to share some of your thoughts.
The recommendation that I suggested is that we put a cap on fireworks. So, my suggestion is that we put a cap on the toys. Twenty thousand dollars. I don't know how that plays with the council.
The itemization of the toys that are being purchased was provided to the council, correct?
As, as far as I know, it was, yes.
Yeah. You know, and the price range per toy is anywhere from, you know, a dollar to, I know, seven or eight dollars per toy. And I think that was when the purchasing agent brought it to my attention before putting it on the council agenda. She just wanted to suggest that maybe there are other vendors that might be able to provide this cheaper. And if there's a cap, it would make our staff work a little bit harder to bring in the number of toys at a cheaper price.
Or, or possibly have toys, like, for boys, like, a selection for, like, one toy for boys, one toy for girls, and then one toy for infants. The toys that are being purchased, I don't have my list with me, it's at my file. I just think that, do your due diligence, do the due diligence, and possibly bring that price down even more.
What, what's been the cost in previous years?
Last year, it was nineteen.
Oh.
It was, yeah, nineteen thousand.
Yeah, I know this is typically free for anyone to come, which I'm all about having it free, but maybe increase that donation bucket a bit.
Make it a bigger bucket.
A little bigger bucket.
Or bigger. There was a suggestion that possibly have a charge for out of, out of town.
Non-residents.
To, out-of-town residents to make a donation.
Yeah, I think something.
Is there a nonprofit that could collect donations on behalf of Christmas Village?
Well, they already, they already do donations.
Yeah, they have a Christmas drive.
They have a toy drive.
Yeah.
Toy drive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how.
It's been going on for a year.
Yes, it has. But I don't know, that would have to be.
Typically, you don't necessarily bring a toy, or most people like to bring a check, so that they can add to the account.
So, I'm not disagreeing with this, but I think maybe budget season's a better time to discuss that than tonight.
I'd like to see wiffle ball bats on the list.
They are.
It's one of your suggestions.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I think that, you know, the sticker shock that we're seeing, you know, there's a lot of things that are, that are feeding into this. But I know that we've done some of the analytics as to who the visitors are at Christmas Village. And when sixty percent of your visitors are coming from out of town or out of state, it is a funding, I know, a lot of sidebar conversations over here.
It is getting late.
Yeah, yeah. So, if this were the, and I appreciate Councilwoman Spino's recommendation, obviously, we're getting close, we're getting into November, the order has to be made, the toys have to be brought in. But if this is something that the council wants, a future council wants to discuss, and perhaps put that cap in, I, I would recommend that it be done in that context.
Are we gonna go with that figure?
That, it's up to you. It's your call.
Yeah. I, I don't think we want to be Grinches for Christmas, so we should pay full freight. And Drake did point out the wiffle ball bat, and it's on the list. So, it's gonna be a good Christmas.
Do we have any indication of what, I mean, there's gotta be a trend pattern of what we've spent and gone through the last five years, do we know?
Probably, we could probably get that information from voters.
I'm sure it's in the minutes, too.
It probably is in the minutes of what's been spent.
We could get a trend analysis.
The naysayers are at that end of the table. We, we'll vote yes. You guys can vote.
I'll vote yes. That's, I'll vote yes. Not gonna make my joke about cheap handguns being available.
Oh, I'm gonna call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Penny, for the recommendation. I, I think I, the council needs to hear more from our purchasing agent. So, all right. We're gonna move into, oh my goodness, we're still on, yeah. Item 11. I will entertain a motion by the city council acting as a WPCA to approve the following payments from Fund 490, both to Wright Pierce, fifteen thousand, seven forty-nine, fifty-one, four thousand, eight hundred, thirty dollars, seventeen cents. All right, I heard Councilwoman Spino, Councilman Iveyne, are there questions or comments?
No, it was Drake.
Oh, it was Drake. All right, Drake, thank you. So, Councilman Waldron. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 12. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's item 13. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the parents. Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Penny, anything from the purchasing? Nope, thank you. William, I'm afraid to ask. Oh, good, thank you. Because we still have a lot of agenda to get through. Mistress Akora, anything from facilities? Okay, good. And I'm in a disadvantage.
Denise is back there.
Oh, yeah, she's on the agenda. Do you have anything outside of the agenda item, Denise? Thank you. City Clerk's Office. Corporation Council.
Nothing, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna move right into business by mayor and members. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nothing.
Nothing this evening. Councilwoman Ruette. Councilwoman Spino.
I'm sorry. Yep. Can we get an update on the Yankee Paddler, please? Yes, thank you. I think it's a great time to ask, sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to let Corporation Council talk about.
So, you may recall that the Jason Hospitality took an appeal from Judge Lynch's order denying their motion to discharge the receiver. Then, we filed, you know, we, we have appellate counsel Karen Dowd, who filed on our behalf a motion to terminate the automatic stay that comes automatically when you take an appeal. There was argument on that last week, and Judge Lynch granted the motion to terminate the automatic stay. Her decision was on Tuesday. Attorney Dowd advised us that Jason Hospitality has ten days to go to the appeals court to request review of that decision. So, the, the motion to terminate the stay goes to the judge who made the decision in the Superior Court, Judge Lynch. But the appeals court could review it. They have not done that yet. Attorney Dowd recommended that we not make any filings in court, because for us, the next step would have been to what's called reclaim the motion for sale, and have it come up on the short calendar, because it takes, you know, several weeks for that to happen. Attorney Dowd said, because they have a ten-day period to request review, we should wait until the ten days run. But, on last Thursday, October 16th, so two days after Judge Lynch granted the motion to terminate the stay, to allow us to go forward, she issued a subsequent order for council to provide five dates, to within fourteen days, provide five dates that council and their witnesses are available to proceed with the motion for sale. So, we didn't file anything. I have an exercise of caution, and she initiated that on her own. So, that was happening today. Attorney Nelligan and I were exchanging emails about available dates. For us, the most important person, though, is the appraiser that the city and TDC have hired. So, we have our dates, and I shared those with Attorney Marin. And at least as of six twenty or so, he had not yet responded. So, that's where we're at. So, if, yeah, I mean, if they don't request review, then Judge Lynch is going to hear the motion for sale. And we fully expect that if Judge Lynch grants that, that they'll appeal that. And I think it's unlikely we would get relief from stay on that, but you never know. You know, if there's an argument to be made, Attorney Dowd will tell us, yeah, there's an argument you can make, and we would make that argument. But at least then, we're moving forward in, in little steps. So, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, too.
You're welcome. Really, the mayor's doing a lot of the work, too, but, and Attorney Nelligan, Attorney Dowd, but we're, and you know, if you go, if you've gone to any of the hearings or watched them online, it appears that Judge Lynch really has lost her patience with Jason Hospitality, and it's worked in our favor a bit. But again, you can't, you can't really predict what'll happen on the motion for sale, but at least it, it's, it's obvious to me that Judge Lynch is interested in moving this case forward as expeditiously as possible, however it may end up. She doesn't want it to languish, she doesn't want it, you know, to just sit there stagnant. She wants, she wants it to move forward. So, we're moving forward.
And I'll just add, I, I agree with Corporation Council's assessment. I think that what the judge recognizes is, we have been in court with this case for four and a half years. And I think she recognizes that the disservice, you know, what's that saying, justice delayed is justice denied? I think this is a perfect example of this. You know, the, the defendant in this action is very skillful at throwing out all kinds of hurdles and roadblocks. And I would agree that the judge, I think, has seen it and recognized it for what it is. But I also want to level set expectations. We're gonna move forward, hopefully very quickly, with this petition to sell. The Torrington Development Corporation and I and Corporation Council met with the prospective developer at noon today. They're still engaged, they're still, they're cautiously optimistic that they'll see progress on this. But we are also fully expecting that there will probably be an appeal of that decision as well. So, this is definitely something that will go into the next administration. And I can only offer my historical reference on any of the stuff we've done over the last ten years as a consolation prize.
But I do want to just add, which I'm not trying to delay, but the TDC made a motion to sort of amend their bylaws to allow a member of the community, which will be Mayor Carbone. So, we're not letting her go from.
Thank you.
This battle, at least from the Torrington Development Corporation. So, she has been, this is, this should be her legacy. And, you know, we will continue the fight. So, thank you for your time and, and efforts. This is our downtown.
Yeah. I, I appreciate those kind words. And I appreciate the invitation to continue to be engaged. But you know, I feel very strongly, the council made all of the, you know, gave us all of the support we needed to pursue this. This is a team effort. You know, we need to see it to fruition. So, all right. I'm sorry, so, did you have anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Councilman Iveyne?
No comments.
We're good? Councilman? Okay. All right, well, then, I do need a motion to open the meeting back up to, thank you, Councilwoman Spino, and second by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor? Any opposed? And I don't see anybody.
Oh, just one.
One. Public, anything to add? Is there anyone on agenda items only, sir?
Armand, you're the only one.
Nothing? Okay, good. All right. All right. Now, I, I'm gonna call this next motion. I would like to entertain a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200, subsection 2, entitled "Strategy or Negotiations With Respect to Collective Bargaining." And with that motion, that the HR director be invited into the executive session. Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor? Any opposed? And to our clerks, because there will be no action coming out of this, we're going in at 9:16. If you want to shut everything down, we'll just take notes, and I'll let you know what time we come out and close.
Yeah.
Yeah, could we do that? All right.